Good evening. My name is Carissa Orne and I am the president of Local 710, our Education Minnesota Chapter in Columbia Heights. I teach pre-K at Highland and right now we are actively doing distance learning through CSAT and Zoom meetings. We are really glad to have you with us tonight for our candidate forum. I would like to introduce the moderator. Our moderator today will be Drake Fong. Drake started as a student in Columbia Heights Public Schools in our early childhood program. I remember your family and your brother. He attended Highland Elementary and is currently a junior at the high school. He plays basketball and runs track and is involved in the Columbia Heights High School Key Club as the president and in the Columbia Heights High School Student Council. After high school, he plans to attend a four-year university and get his bachelor's degree. He is very involved with the community and knows a lot of people in the Columbia Heights Public School System and the community in general. Thank you so much Drake for being with us tonight and for moderating.
Thank you, Carissa. Candidates will have three minutes to present opening remarks. Don Hoyum will be timing and holding up signs for candidates regarding remaining time. When the red stop sign is shown, your time is up. For panel questions, candidates will be given two minutes each. We will rotate as to who starts answering these questions. Question one. Tell us briefly about yourself and why you're a candidate for the Board of Education in Columbia Heights Public Schools. Ms. Silverson, we will start with you.
All right, here we go. Thanks so much for having us, Drake. It's great to see you doing this. I remember second grade basketball. You've grown up a lot. So that's pretty awesome. Thanks to Local 710 for hosting this time with us. We're so excited about our teachers and all of our staff in Columbia Heights. I know I'm thankful for all the great teachers my kids have had along the way. Again, like Drake said, my name is Natty Severson and I am running for school board this year. My husband and I have lived in Columbia Heights for the past 19 years. We have been proud Highlanders. Our kids have attended pre-K in Columbia Heights and all went to North Park Elementary School through Columbia Academy and we had our first son graduate in 2020. We had a great experience and continue to have a great experience with our kids involved in activities and different things. And we love Columbia Heights for that very reason. The size is really great for kids to be able to participate in music and sports and academics in a way that gives them a well-rounded education. We've also loved the diverse people groups. Our kids have had an opportunity to meet in this district. It's presented an experience that we couldn't replicate in other places where our kids have felt welcome and understood by both their peers and their teachers and the other staff around them. And we are thankful for this time. I would like to be your school board member for the next four years because I care deeply about this community and our students and our staff in Columbia Heights. I think I've seen a lot of schools through a lot of different lenses. First, as a parent, walking their kid into that first day of kindergarten and then as a PTA president at North Park where I got to see up close what it looks like to lead a group of parents in a positive direction and make a positive impact in the schools. I coached for years in the local athletics, have been active and finally five years ago was able to run for school board and have been able to serve as a school board member since then. I think I add positive energy and leadership to our board in a way that develops bonds between our community and the board. And I would like to continue doing that for another four years. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Granland, please tell us briefly about yourself and why you're a candidate for the Board of Education in Columbia Heights Public Schools?
Well, hi. Thank you so much. First of all, thank you to Education Minnesota Local 710 for hosting this and of course for the district helping to bring us all together. And huge thank you to everybody who's taking time out of their days to join us, whether it's via this live stream or you're watching this later. And of course, a big thank you to Drake for moderating for us. It's really appreciated. So my name is Mary Granland and I'm seeking support to be your next school board member here in Columbia Heights. I haven't held office before, so this is my first time coming in and trying my hand at this. I'm a really big advocate for our schools. I've been involved for a long time. My husband and I bought our house here 14 years ago. We started our family here in Heights. And our children, we have two boys, who have gone pre-K up until, we have a seventh grader this year and a fourth grader. So we're at Columbia Academy and also at Valley View. We did our pre-K actually at Highland as well, both of them. So I, a little bit about me, I'm a clinical social worker with a specialty in early childhood mental health, which means I have a really strong desire to help people communicate in different ways and better so that people's needs can get met, which is part of the reason why I wanted to run for school board because I think that there's always some improvements we can do to help everybody feel heard. I think our school board is doing a fantastic job, especially this year with all of the challenges and I hope just to continue to build on those successes. You know, I've been really active in the community, much like Natty. I have volunteered in my children's school weekly, every week for, gosh, up until the last time I had volunteered was the Monday before we had the stay home order in March. So I, you know, I was the PTO president at Valley View for a number of years. I have done some grassroots stuff in Heights to help make our streets safer. And I am really looking forward to being a member of this board and helping serve our community and, you know, continuing the great work that's already happening. So thank you so much for this opportunity and I'm excited for this. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Ms. Mueller. Please tell us briefly about yourself and why you're a candidate for the Board of Education in Columbia Heights Public Schools?
Thanks, Drake. And thank you again, like the others said, to Drake. I think it's excellent that we have a student moderator. That's, that's pretty cool. And thank you to Local 710 and the district for making this possible. Like Natty and Mary, we've, my family has lived in Heights for 17 years. We also have three kids. We have a 2019 graduate. He started in kindergarten. All of our kids started in the Columbia Heights School District in kindergarten. And I've got twins that are in the ninth grade currently. You know, I'm running for board really to be an advocate for all of our kids. I really hope to work for fiscal responsibility, to be a good steward of our taxpayer dollars and to engage the community in conversation about our district and really for the common goal of providing the best education possible. I have a lot of experience and bring that experience to the board. I have sat on the other side of the board table, reporting to elected officials. And so I bring that experience to the board in helping us operate and know what our roles and responsibilities are. I also bring a knowledge of budgeting, insurance policies, contracts, construction, capital projects and building, maintenance and facilities, management and planning, I think, which has been useful over the last four years that I've served on the board and I hope to continue to be able to be useful in that way. You know, like Mary and Natty, I too have volunteered extensively in the district, starting, I think, back in 2006, serving on the Highland Elementary PTO for 10 years, six years as co-president of the Columbia Academy PTO and the founding member of the Music Boosters, as well as a member of the Community Education Advisory Council and the District's Finance Committee. I've really learned over the years that being a board member is hard work and often having to do what is right, which may not be immediately popular, and having tough conversations with passionate members of our community that are really all common goal of doing what's best for our kids and our community. And I really want to continue to be available to listen to our community members and to be responsive and to serve our community on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move on to question two. We will start with Ms. Granland. Please tell us, how would you be an advocate for the needs of the district on a legislative level?
Well, I really appreciate that question. So much of what we, as we ask our board members to do is to, as Lorian said, be good stewards of the dollars that we are given by the federal government, the state government and our, and our local government. That being said, we have huge deficits based on lack of funding from the state and federal level. And so as a therapist, part of my, my job and what I'm tasked with is advocacy. That's literally in the code of ethics for the National Association of Social Workers, is to be a good advocate. So that means building relationships with the people that are making those decisions at those legislative levels. That means locally to be working with our mayor and city council, working obviously with the other board members as well, to make sure that what we're all advocating for, we're, we're on the same page. It also means helping to explain to our legislators, both at the state and at the federal level, what it means when we say there's a cross subsidy deficit for our special education and what we need them to do. We have to remember that these people are not always experts. And so taking, helping to break it down into individual steps and make it seem manageable for them so that they can help us fund our schools equitably and to make sure that we can provide the best education and support that we, that we can for our students. I have wonderful relationships right now with our current legislators. I would seek to continue to grow, to grow those, to make sure that we can get the needs met. So, good question though.
Thank you for your response. Next, we will have Ms. Mueller. Ms. Mueller, please tell us, how would you be an advocate for the needs of the district on a legislative level?
You know, that's a great question. And I think a challenging one at that. You know, a role of a, of a board member and the board in itself is, is policy and governance and, and really doing the best that you can with what you have, but also advocating when what you have isn't enough. And I think Mary had commented on that as well. I think one way in which I can be successful in that is, kind of goes back to my opening statement, is, is being that, showing that fiscal responsibility, demonstrating that our board is in tune with the, with the money that is being spent, that is allocated to this district and that we are being good stewards of those dollars and yet those dollars still are not enough. I think the other way that, that I can be an advocate is that no one has ever accused me of being quiet. And so it's making our voices heard, letting folks know that, that, that we've got some needs and that we depend on our elected officials at this, at the local and state level and federal level to understand what those needs are. And it's our job as the board to help them understand and to know where we're coming from and to show that we're not just complaining, but that we truly need what we need and, and we're advocating for our students and our teachers, our staff and our community in doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Silverson, how would you be an advocate for the needs of the district on a legislative level?
It's a great question. And I agree with what Mary and Lorian both said. I think those answers give great context to, to what's on my mind and, and what I'm about to say. So thanks for that. It's nice to be the third, right? I think about what Mary mentioned about the special education cross subsidy. It's a really complicated term. We talk about the ways in which our district is underfunded. We also talk about fiscal responsibility and I agree with both Mary and Lorian that we need to be a fiscally responsible school district. We need to use the dollars forgiven and we need to do, use them well. And I think as part of our governance role, it is keeping an eye on that, but also giving input and direction and making the right hires to make sure that those things happen. I'm very excited about that. But on a legislative level, it is, I think, what both Mary and Lorian, those legislators, our current board, and I think our board for quite a while has been part of something called AMSD, Association of Metropolitan School Districts. And we have, through them, been able to learn a lot about what's happening and communicating with the board. And so through them, I've had opportunities to learn and grow and hear more about this and through our staff at school, doing the hard work of explaining things to new board members that are really tough to understand with complicated revenue streams. And so as a board member, I've had the opportunity to hear, what does it actually mean when somebody says special education cross subsidy? Because I think the average parent probably doesn't even understand that that's the difference between the mandates the state and federal government have set, right? They set the mandates, which are great because it gives an opportunity of great, high-quality education for special education students. And that's exactly what we want. But when they make these mandates, they only fund them to here. And so the difference between what's mandated and what's funded is called the cross subsidy. And part of what I've been doing as a school board member is to explain that gap, that cross subsidy gap to parents in the community and to community members. Oh, sorry, I can't see you, Don. Where'd you go? There you are. Sorry. I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Now we move on to the next question, which is, how does the role of a school board member differ from that of a parent or community member? We will start with Ms. Mueller.
All right, thank you. You know, I feel like I learned that the hard way my first year on the board. But the role of a school board member is, is uniquely different. I think, you know, NSBA, our National School Board Association, really says how a school board member is the policymaker that's closest to the student. When you're a parent, you're advocating for your kid and you're making sure that your kid has what they need to be successful. And when you're a school board member, you're advocating for every student. You're advocating for the staff. You're advocating for our district. And, and you're doing all of that while making tough decisions that are right for our community members and taxpayers. So you, you take your small circle of saying, I'm going to do what's best for my kid and I'm going to make sure that my kid is successful. And you have to apply that to every kid, to, to all of our students. And, and do that in a way that your community supports you and understands the roles that you've taken as a board and the, and the policies and what you've set forth. And sometimes as a board member, that means that maybe the decisions you're making might not be the very best decision for your own kid, but they are the very best decisions for most of the kids. And so it's really kind of wearing a couple of different hats. And at times you have to put that, that parent aside and, and know that there are others that are out there depending on you as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your response, Ms. Mueller. Now we move on to Ms. Silverson. How does the role of a school board member differ from that of a parent or community member?
Yeah, thanks. I can see you this time, Don. So hopefully I will stop talking when you hold up the appropriate signs. Thank you. I, I'm totally going to go with Lorian's answer on this one, too. Over the course of my first year on the school board, it was a steep learning curve in so many ways. We just talked about legislative matters and school funding revenue streams and different things like that. But one of the, one of the very steep learning curves was the difference between governance and management. Thinking through like, how do I have vision for the school's direction and make an influence from a visionary seat instead of that management seat? And I think of Lorian, Mary and myself, all being PTA presidents at different, the three different elementary schools. That's, that's funny and really cool. But there's a lot of management there. And so once you start doing governance, it's just a different type of influence and, and learning how to do that and do that well. There's, there's some amount of space for learning there. And the big thing is then advocating for all students. I think, as Lorian mentioned, we're used to being parents. We're used to advocating for our child and that's great. But I have to put the needs of all the students above my own individual child's needs. And I, and I have no doubt that the, all three candidates here understand that and are completely willing to do that. But I think it is important to point that out, that as board members, we have to make tough decisions that we feel the impact not just on our students, but on other certain students. And we, as Lori mentioned earlier, just, it's hard to make that tough call. It's hard to make decisions that we know are going to displease some people and really please other people. It's being content that we're seeing vision and doing the best we can overall for all of our students.
Thank you. Now we will move on to Ms. Granland. How does the role of a school board member differ from that of a parent or community member?
Well, thank you for that question. I don't know quite yet because I haven't experienced that. I can talk a little bit about the advocacy, as Lorian and Natty touched on, even if it doesn't necessarily benefit my kids or maybe something that they don't like. You know, I've had people come to me for years because either they don't know how to come and talk to people at our school board. They don't know, they don't feel comfortable. They're worried about talking to the principal because they don't want, even though I don't think that this has ever been an issue, but there's just always these concerns. They don't want retaliation. There's all of these things. And for, so even if it doesn't, like I said, I don't think that that's ever been a concern, but it's a valid, it's something valid that families have a concern with sometimes. And so I will listen and I will take some of that information and bring it to, you know, I've, I've been advocating for things for years up at the school board and with principals and, and things. That being said, I don't know what it's like to be a school board member, but I'm willing to learn. I, I also think that, you know, this piece about making really hard decisions that don't necessarily, that, no matter what decision we make, there's going to be people that are going to be upset with it. The part that I want to be able to bring and that I hope to bring to the school board is helping to communicate a little bit more of the why in a way that maybe families haven't been able to hear that why before. That's where, and I'm sure Carissa could speak to that, too. Being an early childhood specialist myself, being able to pull it down into its most basic level so that we can explain it and make sure that everybody is heard and understood. That's the part that I think I can bring that'll be different.
Time's up.
Got it.
Thank you very much for your response. Now we will move on to the next question, which is, what are the challenges and opportunities facing public schools during the COVID-19 pandemic? We will start with Ms. Silverson.
Thanks for letting me go first on that one. We get two minutes, right, Don? Yeah. Wow. How do you even begin to summarize that in two minutes? So many challenges. It's hard to quantify those financial challenges, even with extra federal and state funds. We're looking at managing and balancing a budget in an unpredictable enrollment cycle. We learn how enrollment impacts our school finances. We then talk about teachers and other staff. We have various groups of union groups that we represent as a school, a school district and we work with. And we want to make sure we're keeping both staff and students physically safe while still accomplishing learning. I would be remiss to mention the achievement gap and inequities that are only being exacerbated for, for certain student groups during this time. Students who may find it difficult to work in a traditional school environment, this can be exacerbating some of those challenges for those students right now through distance learning, not having an opportunity to connect physically with teachers, resources to students, food in the hands of our students. It's, you can't learn when you're hungry. It becomes very difficult. And so we just, the, the list goes on and on. And I want to thank our staff and our administrators for muscling through this and continuing to work hard for our kids. And again, this is where we've had to make tough decisions. I don't think there's going to be one decision that was made or will be made in the subsequent weeks as we decide what to do for quarter two. That's going to please everyone. And that's again, another example of making tough decisions that we hope will service our kids the best, given what we have to work with. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Silverson. Ms. Granland, what are the challenges and opportunities facing public schools during the COVID-19 pandemic?
Well, I think, as Natty touched on, we're going to see, we already are seeing some opportunity gaps. We know that kids are struggling, families are struggling to support their, you know, the youngest learners all the way through our seniors in the high school. This is a challenge that our society has never had to experience before and we're all doing the best that we can. Again, we're going to see larger funding gaps. We're going to see challenges in our enrollment. My son's fourth grade class, at one point I counted 42 students on a Zoom call. It's not because we're packing them. It's not because the, the school doesn't care. It's because we literally, there are no substitute teachers because everybody, every single school district in the state needs substitute teachers. I think that we're going to have to continue to look at the opportunity gap, our, the infrastructure, how are we getting students, how are we getting things to students? How are we getting them the information so that they can be on the Zoom call? And then how are we meeting their social, emotional and regulatory needs when we're in front of a screen all day? I think these challenges are going to persist. And when we do eventually get back to a classroom, because sometime that will happen, we will go back, then we're going to have to practice what it means to be in a classroom all together again. And that, these are going to be just the, the little challenges, you know, not to mention how are we going to pay for everything and the infrastructure upgrades and building upgrades and everything else that we need to do over the years. So there's going to be some really hard decisions that are going to come up over the next, over the next four years. And I am really, you know, I really desire to be a part of that.
Time's up.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Mueller, what are the challenges and opportunities facing public schools during the COVID-19 pandemic?
The joy of going third is that I got four minutes to make some notes, but that truly honestly wasn't enough time. Looking at, I, I think Natty and Mary really talked well about, about some of the challenges and I'll touch on those in a minute, too. But I do want to highlight some of the opportunities. Really looking at how being forced to do something differently and uniquely has opened the doors and opportunities to, to look at and say, what can we do and how can we do this? And what are the best delivery methods? And so I think that our, our teachers and our staff and our administration has done an incredible job of rising to that challenge and finding new and innovative ways to deliver education models and can really focus on the, on the educating the whole child in, in ways that, that they didn't think of before, didn't need to think of before. I think also, you know, there's, there's a little bit of wiggle room this year because of the, because of COVID, that gives our, our teachers and our staff a chance to think outside the box a little bit, that maybe they, they had to stay in the box before. And I think that what they can do is show that there are certain things that can be successful and that those things can be carried through as we continue on. The challenges, I, I think Mary had said this, it's, it's, it's that, it's the achievement gap. It's providing the most equitable grounds and barriers, as well as focusing on our families at, at home. I'm getting my internet is unstable, so hopefully you can hear me. Focusing on our families at home who are, who are working, working from home, working outside, trying to provide support and education and follow-up and trying to do
Time's up.
all of that and providing best opportunities for students.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, you've all made it to the last and final question. So good job. Our final question is forecasting beyond the Our final question is forecasting beyond the COVID nineteen pandemic. Over the next four years, what do you see as the challenges and opportunities facing public school districts? We will start with Ms. Granland.
Well, I think right now the opportunities and the challenges that we're going to be facing are going to be just the ones that we're facing right now, just hopefully to a much lesser extent. These are, these are challenges that we've been facing for a very long time. Our opportunity gap has been large. Our special education cross subsidy gap has also, the deficit has also been large and has been there for years and it's not going away. And this is not just our district. All of the districts in the state are also facing this. It has nothing to do with fiscal irresponsibility or anything else. It literally comes down to whether or not we're getting the funding that was promised, as Natty talked about. I think the challenges are going to be, you know, how do we engage with families? How do we help people feel welcome back at our school when, especially when we haven't been in large groups for a while? How do we, how do, it's always been a part of the pre-K curriculum to, to help teach kids social, social skills. I think we're going to have to redo a lot of that even for our older kids. Because what is this going to look like when we don't have a screen between us? So I think that those are going to be some of the challenges. I also know that our students and our staff and our board are going to be up to that challenge. I think we're all wanting that day where we can think about what's this going to be like. And I can't wait, as Natty said a few weeks ago, for things to be precedented again, instead of unprecedented. And I look forward to the time when we're just talking about windows and replacing the windows in our school buildings instead of how do we get enough face shields or face masks to keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Granland. Ms. Mueller, forecasting beyond the COVID nineteen pandemic over the next four years, what do you see as the challenges and opportunities facing public school districts?
Okay. Can I, can you hear me? I just cut out a little bit there. Good? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Drake. I, you know, I, I'm going to speak uniquely right now to the Columbia Heights School District. And I think that there are going to be some very significant challenges over the next four years. In, in that timeframe, our operating levy is coming up. And we really need to figure out what the next steps are financially for our district. And we are coming off of, you know, will, if, if, if and when the pandemic ends, our economy is still uncertain at this time. So we've got to figure out how to do more with less, how to appropriately fund our schools, how to create an operating levy that makes sense, how we pay teachers and staff who have just done an amazing job. The competitive salary to make sure that we get the best of the best and keep the best of the best in our district. And, and how do we do that? By, at the same time, being fiscally responsible for our taxpayers and understanding what their pocketbooks look like during this, the economic time that we're coming off of. There's honestly, you know, coming up for election at this point, I was like, yeah, maybe I'm good. Maybe, maybe we'll walk away. But there are hard decisions to make. And, and I know I'm committed to make those decisions. And, and in the next four years at Columbia Heights Public Schools, tackling lower enrollment and enrollment issues, funding issues, equitable salaries, encouraging the best of the best of our staff and teachers to stay. And, and doing that with the funds that are available and determining what that operating levy looks like and, and how we can make that happen. I'll also mention again, the opportunities. Our teachers have done an amazing job connecting with students in the midst of all of this. And I think that opens a world of opportunities for them to see all of the great things that, that they can achieve and we can continue to achieve together.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. Ms. Severson, forecasting beyond the COVID nineteen pandemic over the next four years, what do you see as the challenges and opportunities facing public school districts?
I think Lori and, and Mary nailed it. The two things I was thinking about were finance, which includes the operating levy that Lorian mentioned that will come up, that will be, well, we'll have to consider renewing for twenty twenty-four. And what does that mean in light of the American economy and our local economy? Funding that will allow a well-rounded education with lots of experience for all students. And then I particularly think of the, the continuing challenges of, of, of addressing the opportunity and achievement gaps that exist in all schools, including ours. And we need to continue to strive toward creative solutions to that. But that also brings me to the, the opportunities part of it. And I just got to say, I'm loving our district right now because when the MCAs don't become a measuring stick for school success, how great does Columbia Heights look? We are showing that we know our core values. And I particularly think of courage and innovation during this time from our staff and our administrators. And I, I'm just excited to see people actually talking about us, like we were a school to watch for how we're handling distance learning in a good way, watching a good way. And so when you're not taking a, a perhaps antiquated and certainly biased test to measure the quality of an education, our teachers are really showing off their stuff and our students are responding in the, in the, in the best way we could hope. Again, is it ideal? Absolutely not. This isn't great for our staff. This isn't great for our kids. But man, are they showing the kind of grit and determination they all have. And I, I couldn't be more proud of those things right now in Columbia Heights.
Thank you, Ms. Severson. With that final response, that concludes the forum. We would like to thank Education Minnesota Local 710 for sponsoring this forum, the candidates for participating and those viewing this forum. School board elections are part of the general election on November third. See your city, county or state election website for more information on voting. Thank you and have a great night.